... play Sunday, April 7th, beginning at 7:00 a.m. The Walk happens at Exposition Park on 700 Exposition Drive. For more info, visit walk4kids.org/LosAngeles. Art challenges life in the latest production from the Los Angeles Poverty Department. In this show entitled "I Fly," or "How to Keep the Devil Down the Hole," the L.A. Poverty Department collaborates with residents of Skid Row to create provocative performances that confront vital issues and ask urgent questions. "I Fly," or "How to Keep the Devil in the Hole," will be running at the Red Cat from April 4th through the 6th, beginning at 8:30 p.m. The Red Cat Theater is located at 631 West Second Street. For details, visit redcat.org. Are you ready for fun with your favorite flowers? Well, Flower School L.A. Open Studios welcomes students who are interested in floral design and want to make a beautiful arrangement with the help of an experienced florist. This studio class provides the opportunity to create a seasonal garden-style design while learning a few professional techniques of floristry. The Flower School L.A. is located at 223 South Los Angeles Street and will offer its next two-day introductory series, April 9th and 10th. For more class schedules or to register, visit flowersschoolla.com. And that's a look at some things to do. If you're a health nut living or working near the Fashion District, listen up. The area's first-ever weekly farmer's market was just launched, offering a variety of farm-to-table produce and other good eats. Take a look.
Welcome to the California Market Center. We're on the plaza of the CMC for the weekly Wednesday Farmer's Market.
This is actually the first farmer's market ever in the Fashion District. This is the way that we activate our public space to engage with the neighborhood.
These markets are the mirror of their communities. And in downtown L.A., we have such a dynamic restaurant scene.
That's the idea of farm-to-table. You go to the farm, you go to the farmer, talk to him, smell the product, try the product. After, you can do your menu according to the quality and the seasonability of the product.
All you have to do is taste it, and you can tell the difference.
Because sometimes when produce goes to stores, you don't know how long it's been in a holding facility. Our stuff comes directly from the greenhouse to the farmer's market.
You're going to see a flavor profile that you're not going to be able to see at even the best grocery store chains. And we are so blessed here in Southern California to have so much.
A new exhibit highlights some of the freshest and most relevant artists working today. It's a feast for the eyes, and then some.
We're inside La Luz de Jesús Gallery. Started out in Echo Park and then moved into Hollywood, and now we're here in Los Feliz. No, no. Right now is our 33rd Annual Juried Exhibition. So with this exhibition, we had 900 submissions that we get. We pick roughly 60 artists to exhibit in the two spaces that we have here in the gallery. There's a wide variety of work. There's painting, sculpture, drawing. Some of the artists are established artists within the community, we'll say, lowbrow, pop, surrealist community. And then other artists are artists that are still in school, in undergrad. There's definitely a variety of things that you'd see.
That's it for this edition. I'm Yana K. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
All we need is Herman and Tony Ramirez, and we're at gatly capacity.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, everyone. It's Friday, April 5th. Want to welcome you to our Valley City Hall. Mr. Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonn, Buscay, Osorio, Harris, Johnson, Weiser, Carrasco, Querian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rude, Smith, and Wesson. Ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Smith moves, O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Querian moves, and Osorio seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, Items 1 and 2 are items noted for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, sir, cards on both.
Let's hold them and continue.
Very good, sir. Items 3 through 10 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials. Let's prepare then to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten aces.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes counsel back to presentations, items called special, or general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to recognize Ms. Martinez for her presentation.
Come on, gentlemen. This is not the time to be shy. Good morning, colleagues. I have a very special group in my district. Can you please help me welcome and give them a big round of applause the Arlita High School Boys Basketball Team. They're the winners of the Los Angeles City Division IV Championships of Arlita High School. On Wednesday, February 20th, at a Soul Dog game at Birmingham High School in Lake Bobo, the Arlita Mustangs battled the San Fernando Tigers for the city title. Yes, Monica, I know, we're both San Fernando graduates. And the Mustangs triumphed over the mighty Tigers, defeating them 69 to 68. And even though I'm a proud Tiger at heart, I was really excited to learn that a group or a school in my district won. So congratulations, guys. They really made history. They're the first championship title for the Arlita Basketball Team in the history of the school. So give them another round of applause. That's right. Colleagues, I just want to show you a video of what these champs are made of. If we can please roll video, we have a small clip of that exciting game. Can we go to the video now?
And again, these two teams are going under the wire.
Within rhythm.
Mark Wayne with the theft and the basket. The other way, four-on-one. He gets it back and scores. It is crazy in here. From downtown, it's tightened up there considerably just from the foul line. Yes.
It's like the NBA All-Star Game.
Off balance, hits it. Kobe for three. A lot of step Curry, George. Goes to Corral, raising up, shooting, and scoring. Hernandez in the front court goes all the way and scores. 68-67. Close to an over and back. Gutiérrez. Put it back in. They win it. 69-68.
Thank you. And that's how the Arlita High School claimed its first championship title for boys' basketball. I want to congratulate all these young men before us today for a job well done. You can tell I am incredibly proud of what they've been able to do. And I want to point out that Alejandro Gutiérrez, who you saw, the young man, he was the one who shot that winning shot. Where are you, Alejandro? He's here for Alejandro. I also want to recognize David Hernández, who was honored as Player of the Year in his division. Where are you, David? Right, with a bow tie? This group is truly filled with true winners. All athletes, all student athletes are really an example for your school and for the rest of all of other athletes around our city. These champions are not only champions off and on the court, but they are actually true examples of what success looks like. A lot of them have had incredible mentorship, not only at school, but throughout our city. And I want to recognize the Arlita High School Athletic Director, Richard, David Richard, who couldn't be here with us this morning. But I do want to acknowledge that Mr. Richard was named as the State of California's Athletic Director of the Year. So I want to give him a big round of applause to Mr. Richard, who couldn't be here this morning. And also acknowledge the leadership of Principal Jonathan Hayes and Coach Jason Hill, who are also here with us this morning. They are also the integral part of what these young men are made of. Not only does it speak volume about the program that they're running, but actually the mentorship that they provided for these young men. So I want to be able to introduce Principal Jonathan Hayes, who I've known for quite some time, very proud of him. And then after that, we're going to follow it up with Coach Jason Hill. Mr. Hayes? There he is. How you doing? Good, nice to see you, my friend.
My pleasure. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Very happy to be here today with my students. I just wanted to take this time to acknowledge these athletes. These are young men who have made us incredibly proud of them. Arlita High School is a school where we pride ourselves on trying to make sure that we bridge the generation gap and bridge the socioeconomic gulf that happens from time to time with students. But these young men have applied themselves. They've gone out. They have applied themselves in the academics as well in the athletics. I'm not going to call all of their names because I think they're going to be given a certificate today. Okay. So we have Adrian Soballos, who's going to major in marine biology.
All right.
Alejandro Gutiérrez. Alejandro Gutiérrez, who's going to major in engineering.
Alejandro.
Joshua Morales, who's going to major in technology. Brian Marquen, who's going to go into sports medicine. Jehavi Tamaio is going to be in the medical field. Andrew Hernandez is one of our other students. He's back at school doing a portfolio defense for graduation. So he couldn't be here today. David Hernandez, who's going to major in engineering. Isaac Martinez, who's going to major in zoology. Christian McBachu, he's also not here, but he is back at school working on a project. Sergio Pérez is going to go in the medical field. And Luis Serrano is going to go in architect. You've made us very, very, very proud. Thank you very, very much. And Mr. Richard, the Athletic Director, could not be here today because he's in San Diego with the baseball team. So he's out on other official business.
Other championships?
Yeah, so we hope so. And then also, just want to acknowledge that our engineering program has brought back many accolades, and they're in Boston right now, competing on bridge competition. So we're very happy to be part of this community. Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for acknowledging us. And thank you to all the coaches that make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Arlita High School has had a long, long history of academic achievements. So I'm so proud, I'm so glad, Mr. Hayes, that you were able to acknowledge what these young men are going to be majoring in in college. That needs to be noted and celebrated. So thank you very much. I want to bring up Coach Jason Hill to say a few words. Coach.
Welcome, Coach.
Thank you for having me here today. Also, Arlita, it's an honor to be here. It's been a long four years. But with the support of our school, our admin, our staff, and the community, we are here today. And I want to say thank you to my players for giving me your heart, your body, your soul, your energy, your effort, and believing what I say, our coaching staff, what they ask you to do. You guys do it 100%, and I have nothing but gratitude towards you. Watching that championship game, it shows that the community stands behind us. Watching, looking in our stands, you see the red and black cheering when we needed it, giving us that uplift when we truly needed it was a beautiful thing. And I just want to say thank you. But thank you for having us here today. Hopefully, we'll win some more. And I just want to say to my kids, to your young lives, the sky's the limit. So this is just the beginning of your lives. And I truly believe all you guys will be something special. And I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you.
And now, members, if you can, please help me welcome one of our players, Adrian Soballos, to say a few words.
Hello. On behalf of the Arlita community, Arlita High School, and Arlita Boys Basketball, we would all like to thank everyone in this room for giving us the opportunity to be here today and to be recognized for such an accomplishment and being able to represent CIF L.A. and Arlita High School. The journey was a long one, but we all worked together to make this happen and make history for Arlita High School. I would like to conclude the speech by thanking our coach, Jason Hill, our principal, Mr. Jonathan Hayes, our Athletic Director, Mr. Richard, and the rest of the Arlita High School administration for supporting us throughout our entire season. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian can run for office now. Great speech. Thank you all to these young men here today. You've made your parents and your teachers and your community very proud. And I'm the first to say, Mr. President, I'm not a sports fanatic, but I can understand and completely appreciate dedication, hard work, and commitment to become champions. So congratulations, young men. It gives me great pleasure to recognize champions in my district. So on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I want to congratulate the Arlita School Basketball Team for winning the 2019 L.A. City Section Division IV Championship. Let's give them another round of applause. Congratulations, Mustangs.
Again, guys, congratulations again. Let's give them one more round of applause. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, before we move into our next presentation, Mr. Clerk, there was a glitch on my screen. And I'd like for us just to play it safe to revote. So why don't you... you call the meeting to, to order again and then let's go through the agenda.
Very good, sir. Bloomingfield, Bonnabouscain, Osadio, Harris, Tassan, Weezer, Coretts, Kqran, Martinez, Oferel, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith and Wesson. Uh, eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President. Uh, I believe you wanted to revote on items three through ten. We should first reconsider those items, uh, and then subsequently vote again.
Well, I don't, I don't think we need to reconsider them. I don't think there was a quorum. So let's just, uh, vote.
Very good, sir.
So we'll just go through first order of business, just like we're beginning the day.
That would be approval of the minutes.
Okay, that would be Mr. Smith and Ms. Rodriguez. Continue.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonn and Osadio brings us where?
Items one and two are items noticed for public hearing. They do have cards.
Okay, so we'll hold those and let's move into the other items.
Items three through ten, sir.
Okay, um, let's prepare, uh, Mr. Clerk to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, so I think we're good now.
Yes, sir.
In fact, do we want to go into the, uh, special meeting?
Uh, if it's your pleasure, yes, sir.
In fact, no, I want to see if Mr. Coretts, are you ready for a presentation? Why don't we, uh, defer to Mr. Coretts at this time?
And Mr. President and City Attorney, uh, Mr. Spindler is making disruptive noises in the back.
Okay, Mr. Spindler, uh, first and last warning. Okay, Mr. Coretts, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Today we're here to honor and celebrate the life of an important figure in the Persian community, Haideh, who passed away in nineteen ninety, but her music and her legacy continues on through the Iranian community and especially here in Los Angeles. Haideh is well-known for being one of Iran's most outstanding soprano singers of all time. Her extraordinary operatic voice and range continue to enchant generations of Iranians and Farsi-speaking people all over the world. The generous love and unending accolades from her talent has lifted her to the status of an international and cultural icon. And while I don't understand the Persian language, it's easy to fall in love with the harmonious sound of her voice and get lost in the beautiful music. We have a short clip so you can experience that beauty and soul that her music portrays. So if we can play it. Well, wasn't that amazing? It's even more amazing when you know something about her life. The Islamic Revolution of nineteen seventy-nine forced her to flee her beloved home country, just like many who are joining us today. Eventually she made Los Angeles her home and continued to captivate audiences with her talent. Haideh lived in Los Angeles from nineteen eighty-two until the end of her life. The growth of the Iranian community in Southern California due to the increasing number of people leaving Iran after the revolution bolstered Haideh's career in the nineteen eighties. That's why twenty-nine years after her passing is my honor to recognize her here today. The fifth council district, which I have the great pleasure of representing, is home to the largest population of Persians in Los Angeles. The Persian community, like many other robust, thriving immigrant communities, helps make our city great and my hope is to continue working with the community to honor their heritage. I'm tremendously proud of the contributions of the Persian community and individuals like Haideh, who have provided the city with a rich array of traditions which have no doubt transformed Los Angeles. In fact, last year at the Westwood Village Memorial Park Cemetery, I was honored to attend her celebration of life. The event was attended by thousands of people who admire her and I look forward to attending her memorial again this upcoming Saturday. The Persian community has truly woven their beautiful culture into the fabric of the city and I know Haideh's music will continue to be remembered and be admired for many generations to come. Ruheesh Shad, which loosely translated means "May her soul be happy." Merci. I would like to thank everyone here who made today possible. Thank you to Haideh's family who is here today. Kayvon Nuri, Nazafaran Nuri and Kamran Nuri. I'd also like to thank Rusbe Farahhanapour, President of the West LA Chamber of Commerce and members of that chamber for their work in honoring Haideh and recognizing the Persian community here in LA. So please join me, colleagues, in recognizing Haideh and the community and presenting a certificate. in the mayor's conference room later, colleagues. So any of you that would like to join us, feel free.
All right, give them one more round of applause. Good to see you guys. Okay, let's, uh, do multiple, multiple comment. If I could get Mr. Murphy, Sean Murphy, items one, two and eleven and then your general public comment. No, in fact, I'm sorry. We just do one. When we get in the special meeting, we can do eleven, Sean. So right now we'll do one and two. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. President. How are you doing? My organization's having a fish fry the last one of the year, thank goodness. Uh, we need to fix our streets. We need to fix our sidewalks. We need to do everything. And I'm excited about the projects in my CD II district, the Burlington Co. Factory and things of that nature. I'm glad the projects are coming. So, uh, my general public comment. As I said on Tuesday, Archdiocese of Los Angeles need to be, they need to lift this ban on alcohol. Uh, that's about it. Thanks. See you later on eleven.
Okay, Candido, why don't you come up? You have items one and two and general public comment.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you. If I may, I'd like to start with general public, if I may. Um, thank you very much for being out here today. Um, I would like to talk about a program that D W P has. It's called the Home Energy Improvement Program. The most amazing part about this program is the individuals. There was a gentleman, Mr. Rivera. I promised you I would remember your first name. I forgot. But Mr. Rivera and his team came out and they removed all the lights. They checked, I mean, they literally crawled through the, um, the attic and I had my roof replaced, tile roof for fifty-something thousand and the contractor left a big old hole where rats were coming in. So, uh, this program, Home Energy Improvement, uh, Program, I think it's something that all the, the districts should really try to, uh, push on the public. I think it's a great one. And the most important part is, and I've had my battles with D W P, but the respect and the kindness that, uh, Mr. Rivera and his team showed to my wife, who's, uh, very ill. They were just very kind. They, uh, we had a situation and they were very helpful. And, uh, again, this program, as, as far as we've seen so far, we've reduced our, uh, water and power bill by over two hundred dollars. And this is just from all the replacements that they did. They even offered to replace the toilets. Uh, so there's a lot to this program and I hope that all of you will encourage your, uh, residents to, uh, take part of this. Uh, I'll pass on the other one.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now I want to try, uh, Mr. Previn. And you have items one and two. We'll get to eleven when we get to the special meeting. So you have one and two and then your general public comment. So go ahead, sir.
Okay, I appreciate that, sir. It's, it's, um, it's Eric Previn from Studio City, as you know. I am, uh, on the neighborhood council, but today I'm speaking on behalf of myself. And I want to just say thanks to, uh, City Clerk for putting somebody relevant items to the Valley on the Valley meeting agenda. I know that that's what we set out to do when we decided to meet here on a monthly basis or once a month. But we could try a little harder because I feel like...
Can we move on to the, the items you signed up for?
No, I want to include CD nine, the new ninth, because that's what we got front and center, which is obviously, thank you, sir, a lien on, uh, the folks down in CD nine. It's only three thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. I think you remember I was reading how the pernicious escalations in penalties and costs on the constituents is causing, you know, a burden. We also have today some major parking restriction, uh, items on the agenda and I think they're in the section, in fact, correct me if I'm wrong, sir.
They're not in the section, open to public comment.
Mr. Previn.
Okay, fine. Then my mistake. I'll get back on the Tefra hearings. Nobody loves Tefra hearings more than Greg Smith and I. And the reason why is because they give the public an opportunity to understand what's happening regarding the egregious backroom dealing. Now, one of the things that we've been tuned into by the great Mark Ridley Thomas is the C R L A, Mr. Osadio. Now, the, the C R L A group, as you recall, was all about taking a little tax money and helping the blighted areas recover. Uh, unfortunately, what resulted was less recovery, more corruption. So the Governor Brown backed out, but now there's a great...
Again, we, we seem to have moved away from item two.
Okay, let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Okay, well, that, that seems off, but fair enough. I just want to take a moment to thank the team behind, uh, bringing six hundred thousand dollar lawsuit against the federal government under Myers Naive, which is your in-house boutique law firm that Falba likes to roll around on the floor with. These are the guys who took one point four million dollars for, uh, decorum wars, where we lost badly, obviously, as you can tell from the decorum issues that are ongoing. But we, we cost, it cost the public a lot of money and they're also the folks who are over at Bonn's house getting LAX consultations that extend without real clarity. So it's a big problem. And, you know, the city attorney is under pressure, which is why for the last bit, I want to just submit this to Falba one more time. This is an avis prohibido el paso. It's a trespass warning in both English and Spanish. I think in America, in California today, in twenty nineteen, we need it that way. And we also need the constitutional protection language. And, sir, I know that you've been a thought leader on bumping people from the room, but this is really where LA is in the mindset of America. We are an inclusive society. We want everybody to feel welcome in City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you. Let's call up Mr. Sax. Mr. Sax, you have item two and your general public comment.
No, no, excuse me, sir. I think I signed up for three items. Uh, two items on the, that were, both items that weren't held and my general public comment.
So Mr. Previn, I mean, Mr. Sax, you got one and two and your general public comments.
So that would be, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So give him his two minutes.
Thank you very much. I would like to say it's nice to be back here, but I'm not so sure. So item number one refers to the Los Angeles Municipal Codes and the L A A C Codes, which are the administrative codes. Those are under your purview, right? You can vote on those codes and do the changes to the city charter as you wish. Charter amendments, though, they should be open to the public, right? I'm told that the time change for the speakers was a charter amendment.
So can we get back on items one or two, please?
We're talking about the codes here, sir. I said, L A M C is a code in item number one and L A A C is a code in item number one. So I'm explaining, I'm asking and explaining that those items are done in city council. Charter amendments should be open to the public to decide, yet the council changed the time limits for people to speak here on their own, amending the city charter.
Again, we're really not on the leans.
Item number two refers to the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, right? So I'm going to talk about Responsibility Act of nineteen eighty-two because it's not just for this item. Don't you feel responsible for all the items you oversee? Isn't that part of your job? Tax, tax equity and fiscal responsibility? Been around the city. It doesn't look very tax equitable. Doesn't look like you're being very responsible. How can that be? You're the city council. Welcome to the city of angels. It's more like the city of death now. It's amazing to walk around this city and see how the damage you've done throughout all the districts and nobody gives a rat's ass. Even the speakers come up here. Everybody's afraid. I'll tell you what, I'm not afraid to say what I got to say. Thank you for your time and your efforts and...
Let's give him his one minute for his general public.
Oh, my general public. Thank you. I needed that. Um, talked about changing, somebody talked about having the meetings here. Somebody mentioned that you're going to be meeting at MTA headquarters while you get rid of the rats at City Hall. That's redundant. Why don't you meet here? Why don't you have your city council meetings here? You don't have to pay MTA. You can still meet here three days a week and nobody has to worry about it. Fiscal responsibility. We just talked about it. Number two, uh, uh, somebody said something earlier about a job well done and it reminded me of an item in the County Board of Supervisors, Ms. Molina brought up. She was talking about something and she said, "It's just a handjob." And I loved it. People in the county, city, at the Board of Supervisors said, "You can't say that anymore." So what I used to say is, "Give them a hand. Job well done. That's what you miss, Ms. Martinez. Give them a hand. Job well done." And you managed to turn Eden into a garden of hell.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sax. Your time, Mr. Sax, Mr. Sax, you're interrupting the meeting. It's your last warning. Okay, Mr. Spindler, items one and two and then general public comment.
Good, Joe. Good to, um, item one, eh, um, three, four, three, West Fifty-seventh Street. I mean, this isn't a Valley fucking event here. This is, this is all the way down in the ghetto south of the ten freeway. This is supposed to be Valley business on our every other month Valley meeting. Three thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars in the ghetto, the current price? I mean, what the fuck is this, you know? I don't understand this fucking shit. I don't, I really don't understand this. West Fifty-seventh fucking street, some fucking lien, fucking ghetto. How the fuck you gonna get a bus all the way from goddamn south of the ten freeway where they're killing every brother in the fucking hood down here to Van Nuys by ten AM? Fucking putz. Wave that fucking lien. They probably couldn't get the bus down here. Then we get number seven, twenty-five million fucking dollars for a hundred and twenty-five fucking unit. Let me tell you something, man. Let me tell you something. You don't need twenty-five million dollars to build anything on North Sepulveda fucking Boulevard. They'll give you the land for free. And Monica Rodriguez knows that land ain't worth nothing. It's all prostitutes and dope and fucking gangs.
Stay on the subject.
I mean, they even ran off Nipsey Hussle out of that fucking area twenty years ago.
Stay on the subject.
Nobody can do business in CD seven on fucking Sepulveda fucking Boulevard.
Stay on the subject.
Not a fucking problem.
Let's give, give him his one minute for general public comment.
It's a fucking bullshit. So what, you cut my time off? Really? You know, I hear you're not running for the Board of Supervisors. I, I, I don't understand that. How the fuck are you gonna get a job for your, your two retarded children, Herb, if you're not running on the public dole in two years? What that one retard's gonna do with little Lincoln when he's on welfare and what's that other fat motherfucker gonna do?
Can we get into something that has to do with subject matter jurisdictions?
No, no, he's on his general public comment.
If you're not on the public dole, how are you gonna do it? Then we get little Nuri. She wants to be council president. Nuri. She wants to be council president. We want you to step down in July and let Nuri have the mantle like the way Garcetti did for you. So step the fuck down, let Nuri take over, and Nuri's on a diet. She refused the phone.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's move on to, do we have Annie Davis? So that concludes multiple. Let's ask Annie Davis for general public comment to come up. Wait a minute, wait, Ms. Peirman, you, you have three different cards, so I don't know how this worked out. So let's get Donna Peirman. Let her speak on one and two, and then her general public comment. Well, you're there, so you go, Annie, for your, and then I'll get Ms. Peirman. Go ahead.
I am a homeowner in CD seven, Congresswoman Monica Rodriguez. We understand your office has been granted $500,000 to address the problems of the homeless in our district. Great. I have sent a number of emails to you with many attached photos illuminating these problems, requesting your help to eliminate the illegal dumping of trash and bulky items along Glen Oaks Boulevard. Glen Oaks Boulevard, starting at 10,500 Terribello Street and the connecting blocks going south up to Branford Street, is our greatest concern. Homeless individuals living in RVs, trailers, trunks, and cars, as well as drivers of big-reel trucks, big-reed trucks, park their vehicles overnight for days and sometimes weeks, while constantly illegally dumping trash and bulky items and blocking the pedestrian walkway with such. Since the homeless living there have no bathroom facilities, the walkway is constantly littered with containers of human excrement. We are still requesting that you implement restricted parking street signs on Glen Oaks Boulevard, prohibiting these vehicles from parking there.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Peirman, one and two, and your general.
Well, I see, I see here that we have a little Gestapo here. Do you see it? Say hello to the Gestapo. It tells us what to think, when to think, and how to think. Anyway, I know it got other confucings, but I didn't put in for number one, so, because I want to get straight to number two. Anyway, number two is, oh, boy, he wants to speak on it. Wow, 25 million. Isn't that a wonderful thing for affordable, multi-bedroom rental housing? No, it isn't, Mr. Garcetti's frog. It's not. Think about all the people we have here, all the, all the American citizens that are not taken care of, all the veterans are not taken care of. Our city, our state is going broke, and they want to spend $25 million. Do you think we really have $25 million for a housing that mostly won't go for the homeless, will mostly be expensive housing with only a little bit of affordable housing? Do you think that's a good idea? No, I don't, do you think that sounds like a good idea? Well, I say we should scrap the affordable housing, because you, well, you can lead them to water, but you can't make them drink. Therefore, these people go in, but eventually they won't be able to afford to live there. So eventually then they'll become homeless. Only now, they'll be disgruntled and feel depressed because now they even lost the housing that they gave them. So I think you just throw them in there and can figure out how to afford to live there. It's impossible, even unless they won't be able to afford their utilities. So they'll turn them off, and therefore they'll be living in the dark. Therefore, let's get rid of number two. And I think we really have got to stop, let people speak, and don't interrupt them.
Okay, now you can get your one minute for public comment.
Okay, now, public comment. Our state is going broke. We've, we're, we can't afford to have a sanctuary state. We gotta get rid of the sanctuary state. We gotta close the border, because the people are not getting, the people who came in legally are being treated the same as people who would come illegally. Therefore, they're telling them, "Why did you come legally in the first place? Why did you pay money to, pay the money, the fee that you have to become legal? Why did you pay for it? Why did you learn the English language? You're not gonna get anywhere." It's like the American citizens, like our veterans. They're not being thought of. There are disabled people not being thought of. The only ones that are getting it are the large corporations, and I'm mad at both the Republicans and the Democrats, because neither one of them care about us anymore. They don't care about the American citizens. They don't care about the veterans. They don't care about the disabled. They don't care about kids.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, did you want to make a quick announcement?
Yes, sir. For item number one, the Department of Building Safety recommends that this matter be received and filed inasmuch as the subject property was determined to be an owner-occupied single-family dwelling and thus exempt from lien processing.
Okay, so ordered. Let's, if I could get Beverly Miller and Charles Nelson, please come forward.
Good morning, and thank you for having us here. I'm here today because I'm just doing my job, just like you are here doing your job. The only difference is, you get paid, I do not. I volunteer. You have funds to, to support. I do not. I raise funds for my community. And that's why I'm here today, because our senior citizens center, Elisa Broaddus Center in Pacoima, we are in desperate need of automatic doors, upgraded bathrooms, and an automatic entry gate. And we would like to have it done by the culmination of the time that we're raising funds for this center, which culminates in June. I have a picture here of one of the young men that stands and holds the door open for us to enter, for the handicapped people. And so we actually do need the doors, and we hope that we could get it done. Thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez, for reprising and answering my letter and letting me know that you are concerned about our senior citizens center.
Thank you. So, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Nelson, go right ahead, sir. Start his time all over again.
They gotta start it over. Good morning, Mr. President and honorable council members. My name is Charles Nelson, and I'm the new Pacoima Neighborhood Watch President. And I just wanted to piggyback on what Annie was talking about and wanted to get some status on 8502, the vehicle dwelling, as we have a public safety and a public health issue there between Gain and Branford on Glen Oaks. And it seems to be a migration that's taking place, and it's a reoccurring issue, dealing with public health, safety, and possible public nuisance. We're committed to working with the council. I'm new here. I hear a lot of different ways of how those things can be done, but we're looking for a positive process and a protocol, how that we can get these things addressed. And we're committed to working with our councilwoman. We haven't had the opportunity to meet yet, but I look forward to in the very near future. And I have a few of my other Neighborhood Watch members here with us addressing some of the other issues that have been reoccurring issues at our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. So is there Fannie Long? And is it Kayleen Wolfstill? Mike Greenspan? Hi there.
Hello. Thank you for coming, for having us here. Attention, council members, please listen to what I have to say. There was a proposed Garver Street tank to be placed on our Hanson Hills, Hanson Hills hill. Now, the original place for it to be placed was Hanson Dam, which needed the water, okay? So why do they want to put it up on Hanson Hills when the original plan was there to be placed on Hanson Dam? Now, we had the groundbreaking right there in 2015 for Hanson Dam, for the water, for Hanson Dam, but yet they want to place it on Hanson Hills. Also, we have negligence in our council District Seven in regards to the Jessup, Jessup Park. Everything is just like going downhill. So we really need the council people to help us in Council District Seven. We honestly do need all of your participation to help us, okay? Thank you. I appreciate your help.
Okay, next speaker. Do we get, there she is, Mike Greenspan? Is there anyone else that signed up? If so, come and get behind this young lady. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Kayleen Wolfstein. I wanted to speak to items two, three, four, and five on the agenda, because I think that there's a homeless crisis in San Fernando Valley right now.
We'll start it over again, because she's new. We'll give her one minute, and you can, you have one minute. You can speak about whatever you want in this one minute. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I just want to address the homeless crisis in the San Fernando Valley. The reason I chose to speak is because I recently joined an app called Nextdoor, and I am very disturbed by the hate and the contempt that I am reading directed towards the homeless populations. It's of grave concern to me, because in my opinion, these are the most vulnerable members of our society. And, you know, when we walk out of this building, all of us will experience seeing tents on the sidewalk before we get to our cars. So I just, I feel that items two, three, four, and five, in a, in a way, are kind of anti-homeless. And I just want you to take that into consideration before making decisions. I would like to see some safe space reserved for this population to go before banning spaces that they're using now. I think it's important to realize that these are human beings, and, you know, where else are they going to go, is basically my point. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. So do we have Mr. Greenspan? Yes, sir.
Mike Greenspan. With Jewish Heritage Month fast approaching, I decided to present a Jewish family. There's a combination of two families. ABC's The Goldbergs and NBC's Saturday Night Sparkle family. Meet the Greensteins, Rabbi Howie Greenstein and his dysfunctional family. Rabbi Howie was married to Lenore Greenstein, a nun. She gave him none in the morning, none at noon, and none at night. Kind of a Jewish trinity. The daughter Lisa's a professional princess cunt who decided to save the world. She joined Jews for Jesus. That's like saying cops for rape. Oops. Her mommy couldn't save her daddy's sex life. Let Mr. Herman sing about cantor Patricia Hickman, a professional singer. She saved Rabbi Howie's sex life and believed in Jesus. With each stroke, she proclaimed, "Jesus, Howie, that feels good. Jesus, Howie, that feels good. Jesus, Howie, that feels good."
So I don't really see how this is on the subject matter.
It's great to be a Florida Gator and kick Bruin butt. Jesus, Howie, that feels good. Jesus, Howie, that feels good.
Again, I don't really see...
Thank you, Mr. Greenspan. Let me ask, did anybody else to my left sign up to speak? And I haven't called your name. Left side, right side, anybody sign up to speak that has not been called? Okay, so let us move on item two. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, why don't we go into the special meeting?
Very good, sir. Blumenfeld, Bonn, Buscay, Nocedio, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Kretzker, Querin, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Ruth, Smith, and Wesson. Twelve members present and a quorum, Mr. President. That brings us to item 11. It's an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection. Let's, we have some public comment on this, these issues. Why don't I start out with Donna Peirman? Donna, this is item 11 in the special. Mr. Sax, I, Ms., quit hollering out. Mr. Sax, if I call your name, come speak. Ms. Peirman, come speak. Donna, you're, Donna, no, you want to, do you want to speak or not? Donna, okay, Donna, your time is forfeited. Let's get Mr. Sax, come on up on item 11. No, Ms. Peirman, you're disrupting the meeting. So just please sit down. No, she, it's on you. No, Ms. Peirman. Ms. Peirman, no, Ms. Peirman, if you don't know what you're going to speak on, sit down. Okay, Mr. Sax, go ahead.
Yes, sir. So this item refers to city-owned real property. So I was wondering, what about just city-owned property? What's the difference between the real property and city-owned property? You used to, I had an item on your agenda once, where there was a discussion about an in-house attorney, and I happened to ask about an out-house attorney for the city council. The city attorney in this item just reviews the form. They used to review the form and the content, but the content is actually contained in the item. The county agenda, they only review, review the forms. But this city-owned real property, so we refer to pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes. Because if it's city-owned property, then do they pay taxes on that? You know, the DWP, the Department of Water and Power? The payment they make to the city is payment in lieu of property taxes. If you cut that off, you're not being very fiscally responsible. You can't stop them. Either collect the taxes on the property...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sax. Mr. Murphy? You got to speak to, I, no, Ms. Peirman, I called you. You weren't prepared to speak. Ms. Peirman, please sit down. You are disrupting, Donna Peirman, you're disrupting the meeting. Mr. Murphy, come forward.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I am against this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Mr. Previn, item 11.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn. Helmand Sons is getting a right of way. They're going to go onto a piece of land during all these great festivals. I think there's one right up on the street on the corner with the Ferris wheels. They're wonderful for a community, Mr. Price, thank you, but they charge 15 bucks to get in. If some of these office holders could get together, give these folks the ability to park for free for a few days, but then also contribute to the community, because what happens with these fairs, it's unfortunate, is that families feel they have to, and they have to dig into their pockets. Like Taste of Soul, it's fun, but it's expensive for the regular folk. So this company is doing a decent job, but they took down from their website, the other thing they're doing, for Insomniac Coliseum Commission, these crooks. As you recall, they do raves as well. So I just think Helmand Sons are willing to serve anybody with a little Ferris wheel, whether you're a lady who's pulling her top off and raving, or a young kid trying to get a taste of, you know, civic engagement. Let's do parks and recreation stuff, and free swim lessons, and stuff like that. I appreciate it, sir. Thanks for taking the time to put this on the agenda out here in the valley.
Okay, Mr. Mares, item 11. Okay, Mr. Spindler?
All right. So, yes, on behalf of the community, fuck the police. Yes, on this special fucked-up fundraiser item. Puppets don't like you, and we don't like the fact that you go and invite snitches to be stitches at your fundraiser, you dirty LAPD piggies. And now you want free parking on a city parking lot for a fundraiser, really? After you just got done burning my good friend Eric Holder for some fucking bullshit?
Now you're off topic, Mr. Spindler.
No, no, because the LAPD has been inviting people to snitch out people in the ghetto and interfere with ghetto business.
So we seem to have moved away from the item.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ms., Ms. Peirman, Ms. Peir, Ms. Peir, Ms. Peirman, please sit down. Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. Mr. Weezer?
Urgent forthwith on behalf of Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Got it. Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Let's vote on urgent. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let's adjourn this meeting, return to the regular meeting. Mr. Clerk? Mr. Sax, Mr. Sax, you're disrupting the meeting. I'm going to ask you to stop. Please don't do it again. Okay, so we're back in the regular. Mr. Sax, sergeants, please go talk to Mr. Sax. Miss, no, Mr. Sax, you're disrupting this meeting. Mr. Sax, disrupting the meeting. All right, Mr. Clerk, what's before this body?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
These motions are posted, they're referred. Any announcements? No announcements. If we could please rise for adjourning motions. Looking to my left side, I don't see any adjourning motions to my left. Now looking to my right side, I don't see any adjourning motions to my right. This meeting is adjourned.